Good evening, I'd like to call for the special meeting of the growing township council for Tuesday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Madam Clerk, please read our open public meetings act compliance statement.
Those requirements of the public meetings act have been satisfied with respect to this special meeting of the township council, which is being held in person and broadcast via Zoom video conferencing. Notice that the special meeting was published in the April twenty second, twenty twenty three edition of the Star Ledger. The agenda, along with the written notice, given the time and date, public internet link and telephone call information was posted in the municipal building and also sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona City Bureau of Times and the Star Ledger, at least forty eight hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and handouts can be viewed online at www.veronaj.org/councilmeetings. A comment period will be held and instructions on how the comment will be provided at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Present.
Councilwoman Tamboro?
Here.
Councilwoman McAvoy?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Here.
Mayor Roman?
Here.
There also present is township attorney, Baron Alway, township manager. Joseph Diarco, municipal court judge.
Thank you, please rise.
Introduce yourselves. Of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. I'll give a little bit of introductory information about tonight's special meeting and some procedure tonight because this will be mildly unusual. This evening's meeting is specifically to discuss the acquisition of property by the township. Parcels of two seventeen to twenty five Pompin' Avenue. In this case, these properties are directly adjacent to my own house, so I have been recusing myself from any of the previous closed session discussions on this matter. I'm going to continue to do so tonight and will be recusing myself from the vote on this matter as well, just to prevent any form of conflict of interest. We are going to have a general public comment session for any matter before that, and then I will hand the meeting over to Deputy Mayor McGrath to complete the rest of the evening's business, and I'll be back for adjournment. So with that, I'll call for any form of a public comment this evening. Madam Clerk, please read our public comments.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter, if you're attending by Zoom, please raise your virtual hand. If you're in person. Please approach the lectern. When you were asked that you were unmuted or recognized. Please state your name and township of residence only for the record. You'll have four minutes to address the council. After everyone wishing to speak has been heard, the council may address your comments and your questions. This is for general public comment.
For any matter. Let me know for open?
It's open.
Second sir? Anyone in the room wants to come up, please sort of approach the lectern. Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Brian Aloya. Mr. Aloya, what is going to be the procedure for our meeting tonight?
Because the council only receive these documents, some of them is latest today, since we received an ad that had come in. I would recommend that the council consider an executives, a short executive session, so I can review the documents and what they mean with you, and then we'll come out. And for your consideration.
I will change to our business for an executive session.
All right, I'm assuming.
We need a motion to go into executive session at this point in time.
Thank you. All right, would someone like to make a motion to go on executive session? Okay, thank you. Would someone like to second that? Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamboro?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, resolution passes four zero. It will be number twenty twenty three dash zero eight five.
Wonderful, thank you. So we're going to go into executive session. I'm assuming we're going to, we're going to actually leave council chambers and go into a conference room. For those on Zoom, please stay on Zoom during that. The council may take action at the end of executive session. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Our meeting is back in session. I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Brian Aloya, who's going to give an overview of what we are, what is proposed tonight in our bond ordinance. It's for Aloya.
Sure. So with regard to your bond ordinance and actually the other two resolutions. There for the acquisition of two seventeen, two twenty five Pompin' Avenue, for those of you familiar with that area. That's right before you get to King's Supermarket. If you're driving, King's from here, it'd be on your right hand side, and there are two white homes. And the township is looking at the potential or purchase, they're considering purchase tonight of those properties that are for sale on the market to be used as public safety buildings. We do have some environmental reports that indicate there are some wetlands on, on the property as well as a drainage. I'll describe this as a drainage ditch, which might not be the correct word, but it's a drainage ditch, it's not a brush that goes then I guess under Route twenty three Pompin' Avenue. So there are some, I'll put them environmental challenges with, with building or with a lot that don't, without getting DEP's involvement, lead a purchaser like the township or anyone else to know exactly how much usable land there is. So at this point in time, it's the manager's recommendation that the council consider making this purchase now. And then we have a contract with Solutions Architecture to do plans in the future, hopefully, but also to work through that process with their engineers and DEP to determine what we could possibly, when I say we, the township can possibly fit on those properties and how would it look? And then there'll be a phase two, hopefully. If that comes out to be the affirmative on, on actual detailed plans of any buildings, any public safety type building that go on the property. Also, on the resolutions is a resolution and it's actually a resolution to purchase a contract, but it's actually, we're getting a signed a contract. So there are current purchasers who've decided that they were willing to assign their contract to purchase to the township. So it's not a normal purchase, someone kind of beat us to the punch, but they've decided to give that to the township. And that resolution is authorizing the manager to execute a contract. And the only amendment I'm going to make to that is that's subject to final approval of the manager and the township attorney, because we could discuss and close some additional items that we're going to have in there. And as, as of on the way to this council meeting, frankly, I was receiving emails from the other sides, the previous purchaser and the sellers on some changes that they want to make. So there will be slight amendments to that. I don't know if you have any questions, if that was good?
I actually have a quick one. What, there's a little bit of an address. There's some different addresses listed. Can you just?
Yeah, sure. So it depends on what's the, it's really sort of two seventeen, so it's the first property. I believe it's the block, the tax maps indicate two seventeen, but their mailing address is two twenty three. So we're all sure of the property and in the legal, the final legal documents, it'll have the block and lot. But as far as when you describe the property, some people call it two twenty three, some people call it two seventeen, and then right next door is two twenty five, so. That's just the way the documents.
All right, thanks for that clarification. Mr. Diarco, do you have anything to add?
No, I do recommend acquire this property for future public safety purposes.
And of course, the only other thing is, if for whatever reason, because the council hasn't gotten a lot of public input yet, but this is what happens when you buy real estate, sometimes you have to move quick so someone else doesn't buy it under you. That this doesn't work out. I've gone over the council that we can just put this back on the market. This is a fair market value purchase. I'm not saying we'll get the exact same thing back. You might get a little bit more, you might get a little less. That's how the market works. Interest rates and things like that affect that, but this is certainly something that the council is going to look for public input. And if the environmentals don't come back or the public input is such that or, or even a better location just pops up onto the market, certainly something the council could consider is just putting these properties back on the market.
Okay, wonderful. Do any council members have any questions for Mr. Aloya?
Brian and Mr. Diarco. So I just wanted to make clear for the public, if you can, if you could answer me affirmatively, that we have looked at effectively every piece of land that we could acquire and build a public safety complex on, that would be zero cost to the township for the land at this point. And have found none to be feasible options. Or even options at all. And, and secondly, that there is an acute need for this land and the facilities that we're discussing, based on our prior conversations.
That is correct.
Deputy Mayor, my name?
Please.
Yeah, so for the past year, I've spent fourteen months looking at every conceivable piece of property that the township has to see if we could build on, on a property that we don't have to purchase. I then went to look at county property, they were not available from the county. And did have a discussion with Board of Education about a piece of their property. And, and that was not feasible either. And then we opted for another piece of property to purchase, and that was for outbid and, and off the market for us. I can honestly say I can't conceivably find another piece of property in the fourteen months that I've been searching for you. And do recommend that you acquire this property.
Exactly. And I appreciate your efforts and Mr. Aloya's experts in expertise and guidance to this process as well.
Okay, just have a question also. Are we allowed to discuss environmental reports that we were given? I just have a one question on this one.
Sure. Obviously become public representative now that you're.
As I'm looking through it, it's saying that the one from Lombardo Environmental, they did a tank sweep on the property.
Okay.
I just noticed they're saying two twenty five Blue Village Avenue was pretty clear. However, did we do two seventeen also?
My understanding is yes, that all confirms.
Okay.
If not, we'll have it done.
Nice. Madam Clerk, did you, before we proceed, did you want to raise something? Are you good?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. So now is the, going to be the time we're going to consider proposed ordinance D one. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title?
A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of property invited township of Verona and the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating one million seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Therefore, an authorized issuance of four million six hundred and sixty six thousand five hundred dollar bonds are known to the township to finance part of the cost that there is.
Wonderful. Can someone please move the ordinance?
No moves.
Okay, I'm going to go with Councilman McAvoy and
Second.
Second with Councilman Tamboro. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, ordinance D one will be number twenty twenty three dash seventeen. It will be published according to law, and a public hearing will be held on May fifteenth.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And now we're going to move on to our proposed resolutions. We have F one. This is for the authorization of the execution of the contract to purchase the property. Can someone please move this ordinance? I'm sorry, this res- resolution?
Deputy Mayor, are we going to have on the agenda, there's a public comment on the proposal?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And I went one step to ahead. Madam Clerk, we're going to open up public comment on these proposed resolutions, F one and F two.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item on the consent agenda, being the two proposed resolutions, attending by Zoom, you may raise your virtual hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor if you're attending in person. Please approach the lectern. When you are recognized, clearly state only your name and township of residence for the record, and you have four minutes to address the council. After everyone wishing to speak has been heard, the council may address your comments or questions. And comment period is over.
Wonderful. If anyone in the room has questions, you can come to lecture.
You do have two months.
Okay, Mr. Neal? You left the first individual in, and as a reminder, please state your name, but not your address, just the town. That you resigned.
Kevin Ryan, Verona, New Jersey. I was wondering if either you, Deputy Mayor, or any of the council people could provide a little more context as to why you think it's important to buy this, this property and just give a general description of what you think it can be used for. I think that would be very helpful in getting the public to understand you know, the necessity for you to act quickly and schedule this special meeting. Thank you.
And as Carl, the second caller, and we'll answer all of our questions at once.
Hello, this is Anthony Gardner from Verona, New Jersey. I just wanted to mention that, you know, I think it's really important that you, you mentioned earlier the environmental considerations of the property. There are also, you know, drainage water issues, storm drainage water issues in this particular area. You know, the other thing to consider, and I'm sure you'll be looking at this as the project advances, but I just want to like emphasize that I think it's really important for not only members of the community to be involved across, you know, the broader township, but particularly those of us that reside on properties that are immediately adjacent to this property. And in particular, for, for me, a concern that I have is making sure that whatever is ultimately built here, there's the appropriate considerations to, you know, setbacks, you know, making sure there's enough space between property lines. I know when I put my swimming pool in, it had to be at least ten feet in from my neighbor's property on all sides, and yet the property that's currently on this location, there's a three car garage that immediately like approaches and touches our property line. So just some things to mention, I know, not to get like too ahead of it, because I know it's, you're just sort of at the initial phase right now of, of voting to purchase the property, but just I have every confidence that the council will, you know, have conduct an open and transparent process. I just wanted to, on the record, at the onset, say that I think it's really important for the residents whose properties are immediately adjacent to these properties, that they're, they have a voice in the, in the process as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any other hands raised? Yep. Wonderful. Next caller?
Hello?
You're on. You're on.
Chris. I live in Verona. Chris Podesta. I have some interest, I have a question about the geology of that site. I imagine the rock of the mountain may be there, you know, and that's causing the water to bubble up in the backyard. Has anybody looked at what's underneath that property? I'm, I'm thinking that may be a problem for the, the building. Understand?
Okay, is that your question, sir?
Yeah, yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Neal? Give him a minute. Okay, and with that, I'm going to close public comment. First, I want to address Mr. Gardner's comment. I do want to thank him for calling in and reminding the governing body in our administration on the importance of clear and transparent communication, especially with the neighbors that live in this area. This will be a long process, and I do hope that all of the property owners that are Verona residents are adjacent to this property, stay involved and, you know, comment to meetings and speak to the council and share their concerns with the township manager directly. I am sure this is going to be a process by which we will have clear and open communication and address issues as they arise.
Deputy Mayor, if I can expand on that, on that same point?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Tamboro?
In going to that, I agree with the Deputy Mayor's comments and wanted to add on the, I would like for this, and I know we had some conversations in closed session about how it could impact the residents and so on. I would like to see a meeting similar to what we did with the road construction project last week that was highly successful. And I have a couple of those that we have both in person. Let me say, an in-person meeting with a Zoom option, a recorded option, where we invite residents within a certain area by hand-delivered letter to come to the meeting to answer their questions periodically through the process. So I'd rather, instead of them coming to us, I think we need to actually go to them and provide updates and solicit feedback and answer questions as we go. But I think the model was very successful in the road construction piece, and this is quite significant as well. I would like to keep that going. So, Mr. Gardner, I appreciate your comment, and I, I do ask the administration of all of that.
Okay, I know. I'll let Mr. Diarco speak to that comment, and also can you address Mr. Ryan's comment about the need for new first responder buildings?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I can. There will be neighborhood meetings throughout the whole process, as I indicated to the council also. There'll be this portions of the property that will be separated out for green acres. So there'll be all those pieces that are not per se buildable, the bigger buffers for the residents, but they will be at neighborhood meetings. The primary objective that I was given fourteen months ago was for planning of a police headquarters. The police headquarters is in the basement of Town Hall. And the discussions have been going on since nineteen seventy seven. I tackled that issue. And the primary objective is police headquarters during that course of these discussions. The needs for fire station number two was critical, and rescue has always been on the board also. The potential of a public safety building for all units is there depending on the size of the property, the usable piece of the property, and volunteer responders responding. Those decisions haven't been made yet, but the primary objective was a police headquarters. And, and I think answers Mr. Ryan's question.
And I would like to add, just from, you know, my experience being on the council for the last four years, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree, we have all toured the police station and seen it firsthand. And firehouse number two and the rescue squad, these are all critical first responder infrastructure buildings that are in dire need of expansion and repair. So the need is there. There's an excellent presentation that Chief Kiran did a few meetings ago that's posted on our website. We'll make sure that that link is directly available still, and, and I think Mr. Neal will maybe create a page, you know, with all of the information and documents as we proceed on this project. But it's really, as Mr. Diarco already mentioned, this has been going on for most of our lifetimes that we have recognized the need for a new police station, and so this piece of property may meet that need, but there is a lot of work still left to be done. And this is just the first reading of this proposed ordinance. Mr. Aloya, in terms of the geology of the site and engineering, what should happen if something arises where it is determined from a geological standpoint, it's not buildable?
Well, then we put it back on the market, because it certainly still can be used in its current present state as residential real estate. It has value for that. It also has value for the, the buildings, even though they're not residential, they, they're actually zone commercial. So it can be sold, you know, as it was marketed in this particular instance as a commercial, so someone else might be able to put something smaller there. I can say that as you've indicated, or someone indicated, the back of the property right now, there are some wetlands or whatever, and our, the township, I think it was actually the manager said, the township's plan, right? In a perfect world, there is no actual plan yet. The, the first initial thoughts are that all that property will actually be made green space and will be put on our Rossi, and we'll actually be able to get some reimbursement from the state for the purchase. So there'll be a greater, at least what you have there as far as woods, you know, we're not planning on going into the woods. I can also say that those current properties have basements and the basements are dry. So you would assume that you could have this, you know, knock those buildings down, put a similar building or a similar sized building or basements, and those would also be dry. So I, I don't, right now, I'm not concerned, because you would be building in the plan is to build in the area that the current structures are located and not go further back into the, into the property. So, but again, environmental will be done. We're at the very beginning of the purchase. No one can really do all those type of environmental studies to figure out exactly what's going to be built and how to do it before they purchase the property.
Okay. Does any other council members have comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I think what you just said was really important, and I just want to reinforce that for members of the public, that this is the beginning of a process. It's not the end. Conclusions have not been drawn at this point. An opportunity presented itself to purchase property on this side of town. There's opportunities there then for a public safety building, as Mr. Diarco said. You know, some of these first responder buildings have found themselves in extraordinary disre- disrepair. And it's become very problematic. And, you know, I will say personally, I'm glad that we are making progress, even if ultimately this is a first step. At least we're taking that step. So I really want to point out that part of the reason why I'm voting for this is because these matters have been kicked down the road for so long. The progress does need to be made, and I think we have a good opportunity in these two product properties. With regard to the environmental issues, I do think it's important to consider drainage and buffers as we always do, and I think the opportunity for green acres should actually provide greater comfort to the surrounding area that this land won't be developed. But with regard to Mr. Gardner's comments about, you know, property encroachments or, you know, construction outside the buffers, I, I think you were heard with regard to the geology, geology on the property. Certainly, to Mr. Aloya's excellent point, you know, if it proves to be unworkable for our purposes, then we can put this back on the market and make it available to other retail purchasers.
Does anyone have any other comments?
I think, I'm going to go to what Mr. Diarco said. We, as a council, asked him, and we started fourteen months ago to, to pursue properties, and I'm going to start off with Mr. Ryan's comments about why we're purchasing this property. Unfortunately, we have to purchase something, because we had, we exercised many other options. As if you follow readings, we had a location for a police department. We looked at Board of Ed properties, we looked at properties that the town owned and tried to fit things in there, but it didn't work out. So our next step was to look at properties that we had to purchase. So this does it, it is a large enough piece of property where we, we can get police, we can possibly, we can get fire, we possibly get rescue squad. But we have to, we are early in the stage, and we have to go and look at, you know, what an architect can draw up for us. Absolutely, to Mr. Gardner's point. We talked extensively about neighbors and consider, you know, where they are and what's going to be next to them. I just want to touch on the fact that with the affordable housing round coming up in two thousand twenty five, there could be a lot worse on this many acres of a piece of property if it goes to a developer who wants to just make money on the property, and it could be a three, four story building. So that's why, another reason why I think it's a good purchase for the township. And when we talk about studies, and I know the police department study goes back pretty far, but Firehouse two, we did a study on that many years ago, even before I was on the council. I think I was sitting here and I actually looked through it, they were handing them out. It's at least ten years ago, and ten years ago, that building was in very bad shape. So that's another reason why, you know, we really have to move on, on some of these projects. And as far as the geology of a project, Mr. Podesta's point, they will do a geotechnical survey of the property and see what's going on. And as far as water runoff, generally, when you get involved in a construction project, there's stormwater management rules that any construction project has to abide by. And the typical outcome is that what is built after, if they follow the rules, is better for the neighborhood than what is there, because they retain the water and have it trickle off the property rather than run off. And if I am done, that's all.
Okay, wonderful. So if there are no further discussion comments, we're going to move on to proposed resolutions, F one. Authorizing the execution of a contract purchase property, would someone like to move this resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to have Councilman Tamboro as moving it, and Councilman McAvoy as second.
And just to be clear, that's with the caveat, we've changed it during this meeting, that it's subject to final approval by the township manager, township attorney, because we discussed a couple of things, and so we're going to add to that.
Okay. Okay. Madam Clerk? Can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
There, I mean, Deputy Mayor, resolution F one will be number twenty twenty three dash zero eight seven.
Okay. Now we have a second resolution, F two, authorizing the execution of a contract for architect for professional services, would someone want to move this resolution?
Some.
Okay. Councilman Tamboro moved the ordinance, Councilman McAvoy seconded it. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Council discussion.
Council's.
Um, I just wanted to point out for the for the public education that this is the same firm that did the beautiful uh renovations to the public library. Uh, and it has a, the firm has a connection and does very much care about uh what goes in in town, and we have. Used the firm in the past to provide advice on these areas, but uh for anybody looking to see. What they're doing, just take a look at the public library, which is a, was a fantastic renovation.
Yes, agreed. Um, um, Township Manager Diarco, would you like to say?
Deputy Mayor, I may. Uh, and if you go to the firm's website, they have also built public safety buildings, police headquarters in the Essex County communities, and their work is excellent.
And I think that's an important point, uh, because the uh a potential police station is a very technical, specific building that needs to follow. A lot of regulations from the state of New Jersey. And uh, so it's important that that prior experience was there with this firm. So not only did we have personal prior experience with our library, which is. Really fantastic, but the fact that they have worked in this police building space is really critical.
What order of the attorney? When I I numbered the uh resolutions incorrectly. Beginning with eighty-five for the uh F three executive session should have been eighty-five. Can I correct those now?
Yeah, there's the administrative.
My Ken Deputy Mayor, so resolution F one will be numbered eighty-six. Resolution eight, F two will be eighty-seven, and the executive session F three, that was best earlier week, uh, twenty twenty-three dash eight five, eighty-five.
Okay, wonderful.
Sorry, thank you.
So we've moved resolution uh twenty twenty-three dash eighty-seven, the authorization of the executive contract for the architect. So Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Open passes.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Holland?
Right.
Yes. Councilwoman Tamboro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAvoy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Okay, resolution F two will be number twenty twenty-three eighty-seven.
So with that, do I, can we turn it over to Mayor Roman?
Yeah, Mayor Roman. I keep it fun, I'm not, I'm not, you can be silent to yourself on this.
Someone waits, Mayor Roman, nothing.
What?
Thank you. Didn't know I would be doing that tonight, but great.
Very nicely done, except now it's my my fault that I left my agenda in my old seat. I'm not, you know, it was funny, I started out in this, uh, sitting back in the audience ten years ago, and uh, the, you know, a little bit like the times here, uh, Madam Clerk was ahead of. You know, commented on it, it was very unusual. So, all right, good to go. All right, um, so is there any other further uh new or unfinished business for the council? Hearing, hearing none, uh, I'll ask for general public comment on any matter, uh, or the same public comment rules previously applied. Please come forward. And again, uh, please do not give your address, just your name and the city you live in.
Hi, my name is uh Mike Boone. I live here in Verona. Uh, just one quick question that uh I failed to ask in the previous public uh comment section. Let's say everything works out, Rosie, get a new uh police station, all of that built. What happens to the existing building? That's my only question.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, do we have any any further public comment or other? We we answer all these in bulk. Um, let's give it a few seconds. Uh, seeing nothing further, I will now close public comment. Uh, since Mr. Diarco watches over this building and he's sitting over there kind of smiling, uh, I imagine he has more than a few ideas.
Yes, and that hasn't been matured yet, Mayor. I would share those to us to the council before it would be public. Uh, but yes, all your space would be revised effectively.
Um, one of the things I'll mention is that this, our operations are not solely out of this building. We have staff down at ADD Bloomfield, we have staff at the wastewater treatment plant. We have staff at the DPW garage and the Buildings and Grounds garage, et cetera. So we're a little bit distributed. So that's one of the things that's been in the back of my head is, are there, you know, reorganizations of our own layout or other operations? Uh, this building is not huge in terms of its amount of functional office space for the size of the building that it is. Um, so being able to bring any space back in, I'm certain we'll just uh make our own operations more efficient. So I look forward to that discussion. Does anyone else want to weigh in?
Yes, Mayor, um, and as I've uh been talking with residents about the concept in general of a new police station. I do have to say that a lot of residents are very interested in what would happen to the existing station. I. Actually, that's the most common question I've received so far. So I think, um, you know, as we have those conversations, as much as we can discuss. When we're ready, I think that would be really appropriate because people are really wondering.
And those are conversations that. Kind of started to have, and Deputy Mayor and I, these facilities committee, and that is one of the things that immediately came up when we talked about potentially vacuums property is. What we'll do with it. Are you, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Diarco? That there may be a second part of the question, if we kind of get ahead of it, is the firehouse property? So is that something we can address? What our intention, not specifically with whom it may be, but.
Well, so yeah, so with regards to the firehouse property, you're talking about station number two.
Should we?
Should we find a firehouse, another location, whether it be dislocation or another location for it? Um, that would be sold as the township's intention, and in fact, I have requested an appraisal be done at the manager's direction, of course. Um, so an appraisal is being done because it has to be sold at fair market value. Um, so once that is finished, we'll be able to figure out how uh to be purchased. You know, I'd rather hold it up for sale or whatever. So there is actually a thought that potentially we're going to, um, if we find a location for it. We can uh sell it now, and the uh purchaser would have to agree to allow the fire department to stay in its current. Location until such time as the construction for a new facility is is completed.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks for asking. That's a, that's a great question, and uh that's been sort of my hope as well, is to recoup some of the capital in uh. You know, the the next major investment that we're going to be doing here in township facilities. Certainly, we have surplus land that has commercial value, and hopefully try and recover that. Uh, any other uh uh council discussion on any public comments?
Most of the time.
Okay.
No question.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Thank you, everybody.